Welcome to the March 9, 2015 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Mike Vaught will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Commissioner Vaught?
I agree with you. Most gracious heaven, we thank you for allowing us to come together to conduct county business. We ask that you give us wisdom to conduct that business. We ask that you be with the leaders of this county and of this state and of this nation. We ask your forgiveness of our many sins, Christ and our rights.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips. We have a quorum.
Items deferred or withdrawn. Item number six, zoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. A, Paul Cook with C and M Cabinets. The item number is fifteen dash A zero zero five. Location, Sulfur Springs Road. The county commissioner is Will Jordan. Site is approximately six acres. Tax map forty-eight. The existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is light industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. This first zoning application you have before you, there's a map on the screen in front of you. As Chairman Phillips stated, the property is located along Sulfur Springs Road. It's just to the west of State Route Eight Forty. You can kind of see the interchange right over here at the, yeah, it's coming. On the, I guess this would be your left-hand side. The, yes, the property in question, as he says, is about six acres. The applicant would like to move his existing cabinet-making business, which is located within the city of Murfreesboro, to this particular property. Cabinet making and similar products are classified as light industrial activities in the zoning ordinance, which does require light industrial zoning. There's an existing cabinet shop located adjacent to the property that would be to the east, right in this area, that was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in August of 2002. That shop is zoned commercial services. When we redid the zoning ordinance, we gave it a commercial services classification and is considered a grandfathered use. The applicant has submitted a concept plan, which is included with you in your agenda materials. The access is shown along with approximately ten spots. Again, access would be on the Sulfur Springs Road. We don't expect just a whole lot of traffic with this particular application, so any improvements to Sulfur Springs really should be minimal. It is a, Sulfur Springs Road is classified as an arterial road with a future five-lane cross-section on the county's long-range transportation plan. So dedication of right-of-way probably would be required as a condition of site approval. On the, this is an aerial shot here. They would be required to do a type-three buffer on this side, which would be the west side, as well as the north side of the property, as well as this small portion right here of the eastern property. This, since this is adjacent to commercial services zoning, they could go, they could get by with a type-one buffer in this area, but they still would have to do a type-three here and around the other sides of the property. Now, they can use existing plantings for that, but there are some areas here that if this is approved, it looks like there's a few bare areas that they would have to go ahead and kind of vegetate or fence or something like that to help them to abide by the regulations of the zoning ordinance. They would also have to abide by the performance standards that are within the zoning ordinance. We did receive several phone calls about this particular application. I do think there are some people here tonight that want to speak regarding this application. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Let me just go through the pictures here. I'm sorry, I always forget to do this. Oh, wait a minute, I think I got these backwards. I'm sorry. That's weird. That happened. Excuse me just a second. I think I got these. Got those backwards there. I apologize. Okay, here we go. This is looking across the street. Looking back down, so this would be looking toward the west, I believe. Looking onto the property. I'd be looking back toward Eight Forty. This is immediately to the east of the property. You can kind of see this next shot's a little better. That's the existing cabinet shop in the back on the adjacent property. Let me go back to the other one. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Doug, do you know an approximate timeline on the potential five-lane widening of that road?
We don't really have any timeframe as far as the county is concerned at this point. I would foresee probably even the section on the other side of Eight Forty on the east side being completed before this side is. And even on the east side, we really don't have a timeframe at this point.
Doug, for our benefit, but mainly for the benefit of the audience, would you explain the difference between light industrial and commercial services?
Yes, sir. Commert, well, what I can do, might be a little easier. Let me just turn open the zoning ordinance here and I can kind of give you just a rough idea from those. Of course, light industrial zoning is, would be a more intense zoning than commercial services would be. Now, the definition of light industrial, and again, we include this in your agenda packets as well, and again, for the benefit of the audience, for those who don't have the packet, it's established to provide, it says, "A meet to needs for," sorry. It says, "Is intended to provide space for a range of industrial and related uses that conform to a high level of performance standards and have the least objectionable characteristics. It's required that all operations of such establishments, with the exception of limited outdoor storage, be carried on completely within enclosed buildings, thus providing a standard of development which removes most adverse characteristics that affect neighboring properties. These districts may provide a buffer between other districts and other industrial activities that have more objectionable influences." It says, "New residential activities, except for those permitted as accessory, are excluded" and allows for some others, community facility uses and those kind of things. Commercial services is more of a, it's, well, it is a commercial zone. You would see more retail-type uses and things like that. Out of the three commercial zones we have, commercial services is kind of in the middle. It's not the most restrictive, but it's not the most permissive either. It's kind of middle of the road. It's designed to provide a wide range of commercial uses concerned with retail trade and consumer services, amusement and entertainment establishments, automotive vehicular service establishments, those kind of things. But it's not intended that this district permit uses which generate large volumes of truck traffic and certain activities that have lower performance characteristics, like car sales lots and things like that wouldn't be permitted in that zone.
What did you say the use of the commercial services next door was?
It's an existing cabinet shop. That was approved back in 2002.
Commercial services because it was grandfathered in then?
It was grandfathered and we were, at the time, at least when we were doing the ordinance, when we were looking at existing uses out there, we weren't sure really was light industrial the best classification for that particular property. Now, of course, this particular use is only a, it's classified as a light industrial activity, so that's why they're requesting light industrial. If that weren't the case, we would have recommended a similar zone.
Are there questions for staff?
Doug, the long-term comprehensive plan, I know that shows that is suburban character area and urban arterial, but how big of an area does that encompass? You know, I'm trying to picture in my mind, ten years, twenty years from now, is everything starts to grow out that way. What's the long-term plan look like for that?
Well, it's not identified as a node. We did not identify this as one of the nodes in the area. Looking back at it, you know, maybe this is something when we do our plan update in a couple of years, we possibly look at this area for possible development node. I'm not, at this point, I really can't say why we didn't put that in there. Again, the road improvement, whenever that takes place, would be a five-lane. So whenever you see that kind of a larger road structure in an area, you typically will start seeing more of a mixture of uses and that. But as I still, to Mr. Kush earlier, as far as any timeframe for that improvement, there really isn't one right now. I think the, probably the first improvement you'll probably see anywhere in this area might be the, and this is further to the, I guess, to be to the south of this property and maybe to the west some, would be the improvement to the Cherry Lane extension. You know, I think that's going to happen before any of this ever will. The existing subdivisions on the east side of Eight Forty going back toward Lebanon Pike, you know, you've got a couple of city subdivisions there, Liberty Station, Liberty Valley. There's already a portion of that road improvement, the five lanes, kind of a divided median right through there, but that's part of that road. It would eventually go all the way through, continue through those properties and hook back up with, you know, Swampland Road, and eventually it'd make its way out to this area. But that's quite a ways into the future. It's hard to say what this is going to look like in just twenty years. It is identified as the suburban character area. And again, like you said, on the arterial, which does make recommendations for non-residential uses. However, with any zoning application, you have to look at, you know, what's currently out there, you know, does it make sense in the area right now? Is this something that, you know, like we talked about during the plan, you know, just because it's identified in a certain way, even if it was in a node, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be rezoned. It's just a matter of, is the timing right for it? So I think those are the things to consider when you look at any zoning application. Did that answer your question?
Other questions for staff? This time, we would like to hear from the applicant, Paul Cook, if he's available. Would you come forward, please? Mr. Cook, if you would, give us a brief update of what you want to do, what you want to accomplish. That way.
I'm wanting to build a four thousand, fourteen thousand square foot cabinet shop. Our work hours will be from six-thirty to three. We don't work any evenings or weekends, so. If anybody got any questions?
Own that property? There was a for sale sign in the photographs.
Be closing on it, yes.
Currently operate a cabinet business and you're looking to move that business? For what particular reason?
I'm leasing where I'm at now. I would build a building. I started my cabinet shop in '05.
Okay.
Been in business for ten years now.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Cook? Thank you, Mr. Cook.
How many trucks in and out a day? How many employees? And, you know, that kind of stuff. Where do you store your raw lumber and, you know? Thanks.
Everything is stored inside the building. I have one box truck and a van and two small pickups that, the van goes out daily. The box truck might go out once a week or every two weeks. I get lumber delivered on Tuesdays and Wednesdays for about thirty minutes, just one truck each. That's all the traffic comes in and out.
Eighteen-wheeler or straight truck or what? How do you get the lumber? What type, what type truck?
It's a flatbed, but it's like a double axle. It's not a semi or nothing, no trailer or nothing. And I have ten employees.
How do you control your sawdust? Do you have to do, just go outside, go into a bin or?
Pardon me?
Sawdust?
All my dust collectors are inside. There's no outside heating units. There's no outside dust collectors. Everything is inside the building.
So there's no place outside that you'd be dumping scrap material or anything?
Well, there'll be, there'll be a small dumpster, yeah, like a twelve-gallon or twelve-something, twelve, twelve-yard dumpster, and they come once a week.
Or?
For sawdust and stuff like that, yeah.
Questions for Mr. Cook?
Have you talked to any of the people besides you on either side and across the street or in the area? And what kind of feedback have you had so far from them?
I spoke with the cabinet shop next door and he's fine with it. And I spoke with Travis Automotive across the road. He's fine with it. I spoke with the neighbors to the left of the property and invited them to come out to my cabinet shop and listen, because some of the concern she had was the noise, the smell, and I've not heard back from them. And the lady, I contacted the lady behind and she didn't want anything coming in there at all.
Mr. Cook, question for you. Your cabinet competitor, your next-door neighbor, in terms of size of operation, is yours similar, smaller, larger?
Well, he's not really a competitor of mine. Ninety percent of my work is in Brentwood and Franklin and Nashville. I rarely do a house in Murfreesboro.
My question's really more towards, in terms of activity, are, do you anticipate you being more busy slash more saws, more equipment running, or about the same level?
Actually, I probably have more.
Okay.
But all mine's inside. Fifty feet to a hundred feet away from the building, you can't hear anything. Even in the building I'm in now, which is old and drafty, you can't hear anything running.
All right. Let me ask you, on the, on the six acres that you have up there, approximately where do you anticipate your building to be?
Clearing to the left of the cabinet shop, it's already there, right where the arrow's at now.
Okay. So kind of dead center in the empty spot, all right?
It's going to be more to the, to the right.
Okay.
And I'm not planning on taking any out, any trees out that I don't have to.
All right. So if, if, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but what I, what I think I heard you say was, if anything, you're going to be pushing more to the same side of your lot closest to the current cabinet shop?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
This time, we'll declare the public hearing open for item number fifteen dash A zero zero five. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Yes, this is Chuck, my husband. I'm Aaron Schultz. We live right next door to the lot. We purchased this lot about fifteen years ago to build our dream home on. We love the solitude of it. My husband saved for a long time for this property to build our house on. We keep it clean. We keep it presentable. We enjoy our family coming over there and having get-togethers. We enjoy it daily. I mean, it's not like we go outside to, go out of our home to work. I work from home, so I am there all day long. I like to garden. I have a big garden off to the side of my house, and we really enjoyed that quite a I really would like to say that having a business next to us is going to deter that privacy and that solitude that we've enjoyed for the past fifteen years. I'm not, I'm not sure how much traffic it will bring in. I'm not sure about the trash that it will bring in. I know that I do smell stuff from the cabinet shop that's on the other side of the lot. When they're burning their materials, we do get odors from it. I don't know what kind of system Mr. Cook has in place for that, but also, I'm a little bit concerned about draining issues. There is a very large sinkhole that stretches across that property that's been covered up. And in order for Mr. Cook to get to that, he's going to, to get to the property where he wants to put his building, he's going to have to cross that sinkhole. And so I don't know the proposal on that. I know we have problems with our driveway. Our driveway is sinking right now because of that sinkhole, so I don't know how that's going to affect our property any, either. That's, that's about all I have to say. Chuck, you want to say anything? And does anybody have any questions for me?
I do.
Okay.
Could you, understanding what Mr. Cook said, the current cabinet neighbor? Is his shop open? Is it just a roof with open walls where he? It's all enclosed as well?
Yeah. He does do work outside, though.
Talk to me about the noise level or if there is a noise issue?
I do hear saws every once in a while going on, but it could be because he's got doors open. I don't know. I've never been over there to look at his operation at all.
You mentioned burning. What burning is going on?
I guess of their scrap materials, but every once in a while, like I said, I can smell some kind of chemical burn that they're doing over there. So I don't know whether it's the cabinet material or scrap cabinets that they had to do away with, but.
Actually, the guy next door, Lanny, got an outdoor furnace and he heats his building with wood through that furnace, so that's where a lot of the smoke comes from.
Not a burn pit or anything like that, then?
Just got one of those big boxes that's a outside furnace.
Thank you.
We do have a signature that was opposed from it. Mr. Sanders that lives across the street from us, he owns the property directly across from us and the vacant lot that's across from the one that's for sale. And we got one other signature, but I don't know how that's going to go over because it's Mr. Travis, so. Do you need this letter? No, we live, oh, yeah, the letter that we got is right across the street. From Mr. Sanders. We're. Yes, that's where we live, right there. That's our house. So our house would be right across from his proposed building.
It's P there for them to pass it around. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak for or against this rezoning request?
I'm sorry? It's, yeah, it'd be over in this area, Eight Forty. You can kind of see where it starts flaring out right here. The interchange is right past the edge of the map.
Anyone else?
Doug, you mentioned there's an auto, auto business. On our map, on our first map, it almost shows.
The other way? This way? This one?
Right there.
This one? Yes, sir. So, yeah, accesses are right here. It's not. That may have been, sorry, excuse me a second. Technical glitch here. It's not zoned that way, so I mean, looking at the original zoning map, it could have been one that was just approved as a conditional use permit, but still was zoned residential. It was, it just remained residential when we rezoned the county back in 2013.
But was Ike, are you familiar with where Ike Davis lives and where his shop was? And is it, how is it zoned? Probably residential now.
I'm trying, is that the same one you're talking about? Well, the zoning map.
I thought you were talking about, oh, that's where the automotive is. Oh, I didn't realize that. All right.
It's all zoned. I mean, just looking at the zoning map here, it is zoned residential. I mean, yeah, it's all zoned residential.
Seeing no one else rising to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
I'm very familiar with this property, very familiar with everybody involved. I just met the Cooks tonight. I have met her before in the past, but I, I know the whole story. About ten years ago, another company was here trying to get this piece of property zoned for a, for a maintenance facility, and they got turned down because we thought it was getting out past the commercial node and was getting into the curve of the road and all, and they went somewhere else and built the building, and then they went out of business and that building is something totally different now. I know where that building is, and that would have been a building on this spot. I hate to see somebody not be able to do, fulfill their dream of owning their own building and all, but in my opinion, this is the wrong spot. It's getting farther away from Eight Forty, yet it's a bigger building and a bigger, I'm pretty sure a bigger building and a bigger business than the one that's already there closer to Eight Forty. The Schultz's got a nice house there. They take great care of it, and, you know, they bought a residentially zoned lot in the middle of three residentially zoned lots, and I think they had every sense to think that they'd be beside houses instead of beside businesses. The commercial node shown on the last map I saw ended at where the current cabinet shop is, or maybe even a little farther back toward Eight Forty. I don't doubt that whenever that road's improved, it's going to change a lot, but I don't think I'll live long enough to see that road improved. I know the Cherry Lane connector road was on, in 1989, was on the five-year plan. That was twenty-six years ago, and it's still on the five-year plan, so. But in my opinion, that's just the wrong spot. I talked to Mr. Cook a few months ago, and I told him if he couldn't get the blessing of the people next door, then I would have to be against it, and he has not got the blessing from the people next door. They're the ones going to have to live with it. And, you know, if something happens to Mr. Cook, there's a fourteen thousand square-foot building there, it's going to be something that's on light industrial, a more intensive zoning than the one across the way that's closer to Eight Forty. And with that, I'll make a motion to deny, and I hate to have to do that, but I will.
Have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? And a second. Thank you. Commissioner Sandlin? Discussion?
I understand what Commissioner Jordan is saying, and I understand all aspects and respect all parties involved in this situation. I do have some knowledge as well of this area. Regardless of where we thought a node may initially ended, or we thought this or thought that, it's hard for me to look at it and see that we've already got one that exists right there, and a cabinet shop's a cabinet shop, big or small, understanding the noise factor, and this is a pretty big, if it's fourteen thousand square foot, it is a big shop compared to the other one. I respect and understand the Schultz's side of building their house, their dream house. It's what they wanted, and all makes sense to me, but we've set a precedence regardless of whether it was grandfathered in or whatever. We've set a precedent that's okay in that area. Same for the car business, repair business across the street. It is part of our plan, and I agree that we need to look not just down the road, we need to look at today and see what is going on out there, but I would, personally based on the information that I see before me, which is what I'm basing a book of what I have tonight, is I would, I would have to. is what I'm basing a book of what I have tonight, is I would, I would have to respectfully go against the, the motion to deny. I think we've already set the precedents and, uh, again, I need more information to, to particularly persuade me the other way. But, uh, again, I respect all parties involved and it's, it's a tough thing. It's a tough decision. Uh, there's unfortunately probably no winners in this deal, but...
Other comments? Ready to vote? Your affirmative vote will be to deny. Okay? Everyone understand? All those in favor of the motion to deny item number 15 dash A005, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Call the roll, please, gal.
No.
Veronica Buchanan?
No.
Will Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
No.
Craig Lynch?
No.
Chip Pinion?
No.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Steve Sandlin?
Aye.
Mike Vaught?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Aye.
You have five yeses and five nos.
I'm sorry?
Five yes, five no.
Motion fails. Uh, Josh, motion fails?
Motion fails, yes.
This, uh, subject is scheduled to come before the Rutherford County Commission on Thursday night, April the 16th, 6:00 PM here in this courthouse.
Mr. Chairman, we, we, uh, I believe we have to have a recommendation one way or the other. I mean, maybe we need to have more discussion. I don't think we can just send it on without a recommendation. State law requires a recommendation by the planning commission.
Say that again, Doug.
The motion that we just had failed because of a tie vote. My understanding of state law, and Josh, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the state law requires that a recommendation be made to the county commission from the planning commission. We just can't send it on with no recommendation at all. So, I think we need to have more discussion on it and come to a consensus one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the application. I think, if, if we had a tie, the motion did not...
Right.
In reality, there, what we're taking, the planning commission is, the vote did not pass. Brian, vote that way.
No, what, 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 yeah, yeah. Historically, many years ago, um, the planning commission had a practice of if you had a motion and it failed, then you sent it forward as if the other motion had been made. But several years ago, we reversed that practice and started, um, requiring that if there is a motion that fails, then you continue debate until a motion is made that passes. And then that is what would be sent forward. So, at this point, someone could make a motion to, um, to approve and you could vote on that motion and see what happens. You could continue to debate before someone makes another motion, but at some point, another motion would need to be made and voted on until there is a motion that is approved and then that's what would go forward to the county commission.
You can filibuster to motion.
You can arm wrestle, you can do whatever you wanna do.
Oh. Yeah.
So, what you're saying, Josh, is that even though we've said that the, that the motion, it, it, well, the, the request is denied and we won't send it for the county commission even if the, even if the applicant wants us to?
Well, I don't, I don't know about what the applicant wants, but I, I do know that you need an affirmative vote, yes or no, which is what you would be sending forward. So, the fact that the motion to deny failed simply means you don't have an approved motion at this point. And so, you would, you need another motion.
Okay. Everyone understand?
I have a vote on the first and second.
Okay. Jim, you had a motion.
I have a motion to approve the application.
You have a motion to approve. Now, we need a second.
Second.
Second. Motion to approve and a second. Now, we're open for discussion again.
Well, I hate to get in the middle of this too much, but Chip said there's a cabinet shop next door. If I'm not mistaken, the cabinet shop next door is around 6,000 square feet. And I think Lanny's got three employees besides himself. And you're gonna go farther away from the commercial area and build one that's over double the size with three times the employees. To me, that's just, I mean, going in the wrong direction.
And let me throw this out there too, just from staff standpoint. When we were looking at the zoning map, uh, originally, when we were coming up with the new zoning districts in the 2013 map, again, what we tried to do with existing uses, we tried to, tried to match them as close as we could to zoning that would allow them. There were certain situations, and this was one of them, where we weren't sure if light industrial was the best classification for that particular property just because of the number of uses that it does allow. Commercial services allows for a number of uses too. If for some reason that cabinet shop disappears and somebody wants to put something like a convenience market there, something on the property, there'd be nothing stopping them. Uh, but that was why it got commercial services zoning as opposed to light industrial. The reason, again, he's asking for light industrial is because that's how it's classified in the zoning ordinance. Now, when staff looked at it, and you'll see, we did have a, a recommendation for approval on it, we were considering just the adjacent use of, it's already a cabinet shop there. I mean, those are the kinda things we're looking at. But, I mean, the point is made by Mr. Jordan, which is well-taken, I think, that if for some reason, and this goes for the adjacent shop as well, if they leave, you know, that property is open to do whatever the zoning allows in that district. Um, so, that's something to keep in mind as well. But from staff's standpoint, that's kinda how we were evaluating the application.
Dude, I, on these deals that are out in the county, I, I generally defer to the local commissioner and the local commissioners against it. The people next door have been there a long time. You know, I think it's a little unfair to, if, if the light industrial was on the east side of, of the existing cabinet shop, if they were plying over there, then I think it'd be good. Or if the five lane was coming through in two years and we knew it was coming through, I think it'd be, I think it'd be acceptable, acceptable because the handwriting's on the, on the wall then. We know what's coming and it's probably gonna be commercial to some sort of use like that. But I, I intend to vote against the motion for those reasons. These people have been there a long time and I, I don't, I don't think we oughta switch gears on them now.
Ready to vote?
What's the motion again?
Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Last time it was a motion to deny. This time it's a motion to approve. Uh, ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 15 dash A005, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Call the roll, gal.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Veronica Buchanan?
Yes.
Will Jordan?
No.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Craig Lynch? Sorry. Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
No.
Steve Sandlin?
No.
Mike Vaught?
No.
Jeff Phillips?
No.
Five and five. Motion fails.
I have a motion to confirm.
Just one.
Sir, what does that do to it?
Josh, could you not still send it to the full commission with a gridlock on? I mean, you've had both motions up.
Right. Yeah, I was trying to, trying to pull the statute up. I think what it, it says something like approval, denial, or recommendations, or something like that is what the statute actually says. But in context, part of the reason I think it's important that you, you clarify here is that the law says if the planning commission sends a zoning request forward with a, a vote for a denial, then in order for the county commission to approve it, it requires a majority vote of the entire commission, which is a little different. Ordinarily, when the commission votes on something, it's a majority vote of the commissioners present. And so, there's a little bit of a different standard if you send it forward with a denial. Um, but if you'll give me a minute, I'm not sure how quick I can pull this up on my phone, but I will try and, and try to answer that question.
I seem to recall we have had motions in the past, they send it forward with no recommendation. That has been a form of a motion, that has to pass. But that may have been out of order when we did it, but I can remember doing it.
The bylaws of the planning commission do allow for a, a tabling or a postponing of an item until, it says the motion shall include the date of the meeting at which the proposal will be considered again. So, the proposal that has been postponed must be placed on the agenda of the meeting specified. So, that's, that option is available based on the bylaws that we have.
Is a motion, uh, Josh, I know you're looking something up, but would a motion to go ahead and, uh, refer it to the county commission for their consideration be in order? Could we do that? I think Commissioner Jordan mentioned it a minute ago.
Say, ask that question one more time?
Motion be in order, since we've already had two motions, would a motion to forward to the county commission for their consideration be in order?
All right. I was trying to make sure I can rectify this with the statute. The, because the zoning resolution itself does not really tell us. So, um, I'm looking at TCA 137105, which deals with amendments to the zoning ordinance. And it initially vests the county legislative body with that authority, but then says, "But any such amendment shall not be made or become effective unless the same be first submitted for approval, disapproval, or suggestions to the regional planning commission of the region in which the territory covered by the ordinance is located. And if such regional planning commission disapproves, such amendment shall require the favorable vote of a majority of the entire membership of the county legislative body." So, under this statute, my opinion is that you can, it has been first submitted for approval, disapproval, or suggestions to this body and you could send it forward under any of those. So, I guess a suggestion would be, we suggest it's a tie, you're gonna have to decide. But I'm not sure under this statute that you're obligated necessarily to send it forward with a yes or no. You could choose to do what you're suggesting.
But the majority vote change still is in play? They have to have a, a greater than two-thirds?
No, my opinion would be that you have not sent it forward with a denial. So, I don't think that majority of the entire membership provision would apply. You would be sending it forward with neither a recommendation for approval nor a recommendation for denial.
So, a simple majority at full planning would suffice?
My opinion, yes, if you send it forward with no recommendation.
Does there have to be a motion for us to do that?
There needs to be a motion to send it forward.
Make a motion, we send this to the county commission with no recommendation.
I, I will second that and I will also remove my motion to defer.
Have a motion to refer to the county commission with no recommendation and a second. Discussion on that motion.
I would, I would just say to the commission, they'll probably know or whatever from the minutes or whatever, but due to a stalemate, positive or negative, whether you, that that's why it's coming to them, that we could not decide in a tie vote twice for and against. So, it kinda helps explain to the full commission something coming to them without a recommendation. Otherwise, this body's not doing its job. And that's all I'm saying. I mean, if we'd had our other member here able to sway probably one way or the other, see? So, that's why we have a...
And as part of our, as part of preparing for the county commission meeting, we always update the staff report, uh, to what happens at the planning commission and your statement is very well taken and we'll make sure that that gets in there.
We will. Thank you, Steve. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. It will go before the, uh, full county commission on Thursday night, April 16th, 6:00 PM in Item number 6B, Thomas Buddy Ogles. The item number is 15 dash A006. Location is 7151 Manchester Pike. County commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size is approximately 1.39 acres. Tax map 151. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, this particular application comes to you as a result of a zoning enforcement action on the property. Uh, the applicant purchased the property in August of 2014 and began operation of his electrical contracting business in November of the same year. Unfortunately, no zoning approvals were ever obtained for the use. Uh, staff met with the applicant and explained his options, uh, moving forward and he decided to pursue rezoning of the property. Uh, the applicant operates an electrical contracting business. Uh, his normal business hours are Monday through Friday from 6:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Uh, he does do some occasional work on Saturdays. Uh, the business employs about 25 people with about 12 vehicles, which includes all their vans, bucket trucks, et cetera. Uh, although there is an office on the property, uh, traffic from the general public is limited. Uh, most of the area of the existing building is used for storage. Uh, basically, when you look at the map, uh, this is the property. The applicant's house is actually right here. This is the building where the business is actually run out of. Is that arrow coming up? No, yeah, it is. This is the building here where the business is located. This is an existing horse barn in this area, which is still used for that purpose. Uh, the applicant has submitted a concept plan, which is included with your agenda materials. Uh, access to the property would be from an existing access road here on Gum Road. They would not be using any access onto Manchester Highway. Uh, they are showing on that concept plan, let's flip open to that here, a fairly substantial buffer around the proposed building. Something else to keep in mind, they're not asking for zoning of the entire track. What they're proposing to do is really just zone the area that they wanna use for, the area for the business is, and that's what staff had recommended they, they tried to do as opposed to rezoning the whole parcel, is not the whole tract is being used for that purpose. They're showing a fairly thick buffer along the, uh, this be this side, I guess that'd be the western edge of the property and the northern side as well. They're limited more in what they can do on the eastern side because of the location. It's hard to tell right from looking at this, but the access drive pretty much is, is almost right on the property line. So, the applicant has told the, or the staff rather, has told the applicant that they probably would have to look at a alternative landscape plan for the buffer along that eastern side should this application be approved. Uh, we've also told the applicant that they'll need to, you know, pave some parking around here, but that we'd be willing to work with them with the remainder of the access drive, especially considering that the horse barn is still used for, for equine uses. Uh, you know, that's, it's a little harder on, on them than it would be for the gravel. So, we told them we would help, we'd work with them if this application were approved. Uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is present. Uh, is he out there? Yes, yeah, he's, the applicant is here. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Doug, why is so much of the property...
Doug, why is so much of the property wanting to be rezoned when only the business is in that one building?
No, he's only asking for about one and a half acres or so to be, he's not asking for the whole track, he's only asking for a small portion of it. I'll go through the pictures here, but let me just, since I kind of got these backwards, let me go back here, apologize for that, I don't know. I'm sorry? It's, it's not on here, it's really more on the concept plan, it's in your agenda pack, it's that area that you see it's landscaped, it's about 1.3, I believe is what it said. Yeah, 1.39 acres is what they're looking at, yes, ma'am. So they will require a legal description on that. But this is the access point onto Gum Road, and you kind of see the, the intersection in the, in the background there, the Manchester Highway. Directly across the street is Gum Road Mini Storage, which has been there for several years. That's looking back down Gum Road. That's the existing horse barn on the property right there. You can kind of see beyond, you can see the applicant's house beyond that, looking down Gum. And that's looking at, I believe, from Manchester Highway. This is the building, this is the horse barn here, this would be the building that they're talking about, and then the applicant's house right here. Again, this is on Manchester, this would be looking back up, going toward Murphy's Borough.
Questions for staff?
Doug, it seems illogical to me to rezone a one and a half acres in the middle of something without dedicated access to a road. Will there be dedicated access?
Well, he'll be using the existing access to East Gum to, to get to that. Now, that access isn't exclusive for him, but, you know, for, for that business, but, you know...
Dedicated into legal descrip, it looks like to me it should be, because we're dedic, we're doing an island there if, if, if there isn't some kind of...
Well, I mean, there's nothing that says that the property has to be, that you have to have, that the zoning of the property has to go to a, a public right of way. Now, I'm sure they could work the legal description in such a way that they are including that access point, I don't think that's a real big issue, but...
Well, what I was thinking about, I mean, down the road, you know, this man sells the whole property, and you've got this island there, then it could be accessed off of Manchester Highway, so, you know, that's the reason I was questioning that. I'm trying to see down the road, which is not always easy.
Yeah, I mean, I'll agree, it's not an ideal situation, but at the same time, I don't think staff was very comfortable, and I don't think the applicant wanted to zone the entire track either.
But you're just getting a legal description of the part zoned as a commercial, it's not actually being broken out into a separate lot?
We had, well, if he, if he was going to do that just by itself, then that would run into some other issues. Now, he did, and we did talk to him originally about maybe subdividing off the horse barn and the other barn where he has his business from the parent track where his house is. We have talked about him doing some of that, but I don't know what he wants to do moving forward, you know, beyond the zoning.
But as far as what we're doing here tonight is not creating additional...
You're not creating an additional lot right now, no, sir.
Other questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Mr. Ogles, if you'd come out, please. Name and address, and a little brief explanation of what you want to do.
Thomas Ogles, 7151 Manchester Pike. Mr. DeBose has explained it exactly what we're trying to do out there. I bought that piece of property, and I asked Mr. Jernigan, would it be all right if I put my, my shop there, and he said he didn't see any problem with it, because there was commercial businesses all the way around it, and so I bought it and moved my shop out there. Forty-two years. I don't look that old.
Questions for Mr. Ogles? Thank you. This time we'll declare public hearing open for item number 15-8006. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come forward, state your name and address, please.
I'm Randall Jones, I live at 7841 East Gum Road. I'm also the road commissioner for Zone 3, which is that area. I know this property well, I live about five houses down from it. I don't even know if there, I mean, these buildings, if Mr. Ogles had in the bottom, probably going to sit empty. The horse business went down there and everything, and really truly doesn't bother the neighbors down through there, I know everybody down through there, and no, no problem with traffic or anything. He's got a big, as far as road, getting in and out, it's a, you've got to remember, it used to be a horse barn, so he's got a big wide turning area in there to get in and out of the road and everything, but I do not have any problems, and none of my neighbors has said anything to me about having any problems, Mr. Ogles. Matter of fact, I live in the neighborhood because there's other businesses there, and they do the same thing, they don't bother us either. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this zoning request?
My name is Jake Jacobs, I live on Jacobs Road. I'd like to speak for it, he's been there for a couple months already, no problem at all, we're just proud to have him to community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rising, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
I have a question for David. David, our, our notes say that this application comes as a result of a zoning enforcement action. Was there a complaint, or what, what brought to your attention that...
There was a complaint that came into the building code department, I'm not sure what location or what it was, I think the traffic in and out kind of let someone know something was going on, but I, I can't tell you where the complaint came from.
I guess what bothers me is perhaps the lack of communication in terms of the applicant and his county commissioner. And it may be that there, there was not really a definition of what a shop is, may I put a shop on my property? Well, a shop here is, has 25 employees and is a full-time business, so, um, how, how do you, how do you nicely bring this to the commissioner's attention, that he needs to be careful in terms of off-the-cuff allowing people to do things that aren't allowed? That's, that's my conundrum, is how do we explain to the commissioner that he can't say stuff like that, or any of us, any commissioners can't? You, you got, you got to have the right approval, period. That's the only thing that bothers me. Thanks.
And, and I'll say this, when the applicant, I mean, he told us the same thing, and of course, I told the applicant at that point, well, I said the, basically that there is a process that has to go through, I mean, if he doesn't have a problem with it, that's fine, but you still, I mean, he, no one person has the authority to unilaterally change zoning of a property to approve an application, and I think the commissioner realizes that, but at the same time, you know, I, I think there's merit to what you say as far as, you know, maybe there was a miscommunication between the channels, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with the staff recommendations there.
Motion to approve, and several seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 15-8006, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion carries, thank you. Staff reports, I think in front of you, you have a copy of the most recent building code report, so you can take a look at that at, at your leisure. Doug, you have anything?
No, sir, I have nothing further.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 23rd, 9:00 AM at the Planning Mez, and I think on our agenda will be a continuation of the discussion on retreat, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Looking forward to that discussion.
Looking forward to it. Anything else? We're adjourned.